Good evening, welcome to our City Commission meeting. Please silence all your phones during the meeting tonight as we are being televised. And we will begin the meeting by a pledge of allegiance followed by a silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, to begin with, we'll have a presentation, the new employee welcome ceremony. I'll have you come up here and I have a little thing for you and a pin. The first is Jasmine Crowder. Jasmine was hired in January 12, 2017 as a police officer. She's a graduate of Leavenworth High School and attended University of St. Mary. And welcome very much. This Nicholas Poff here. Okay. Colette Kiska. Colette was hired on April 6, 2017 as administrative assistant in the Public Works Department. She's a graduate of Annandale High School and attended Kansas City Community College. Welcome, Colette. Next is Andrea Brown. Andrea was hired on April 20, 2017 as telecommunication specialist. She's a graduate of Leavenworth High School and attended Kansas City Community College. Welcome Andrea. Is, no, DJ Roscoe is not here, but DJ was hired on May 4, 2017 as a housing intake specialist. She's a graduate of Leavenworth High School and attended Emporia State University. And Dennis Ghee, Dennis was hired, he's not here either, he was hired on May 11, 2017 as a stormwater laborer. And next on the list is Anthony Thomas. Anthony Thomas here? Anthony was hired on May 18, 2017 as streets equipment operator number one. He's a graduate of Mission Valley High School and attended Allen Community College. Welcome. Next is Michael Stefan. Michael was hired on May 25, 2017 as project manager. He's a graduate of Milan High School and attended Platt College. Thank you and welcome. It's Timothy Warner here. Tim was hired on June 1, 2017 as master mechanic. He's a graduate of West Platt High School and attended Vocational School. Next on the list is Donald Nealan. Donald Nealan is not here either. Donnie was hired on June 1, 2017 as a WBC operator one. He's a graduate of Leavenworth High School. And I didn't talk about Nicholas Poff, but Nicholas was hired on April 6, 2017 as a WBC, PC operator. He's a graduate of Leavenworth High School and attended the University of Kansas. Welcome to all of you. I'm glad to see so many Leavenworth graduates here working for us. So, anyway, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is consideration of the previous meeting minutes. Have you read the meeting and if so, do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept the minutes from the May 23, 2017 regular meeting as presented.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded, please begin voting with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item on the agenda, second consideration ordinance, second consideration ordinance number 8039 rezoning of 320 South 7th Street.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, this is the second reading for the rezoning of the property near Haymarket Square, the Greenmeyer property that's going to be turned into lots. There have been no changes since the first reading.
Roll call. This is a roll call vote. Begin voting with Commissioner Rehman. Sorry.
Aye.
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 Roll call carried. Second consideration ordinance, 8040 rezoning, 1101 North 4th.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, this item has not changed from the first reading and this involves the rezoning of the second Ferguson Properties Hotel.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
If not, please begin the roll call vote with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Next item, second consideration ordinance number 8041, amending section 110-45 of the Code of Ordinances.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, there have been no changes. As a brief reminder, this is the ordinance change that restricts the turning movements at 7th and Metropolitan, we talked about.
Yes. Okay. Any questions?
No ma'am.
Let's begin the roll call vote with Commissioner Rehny.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And next item is second consideration ordinance number 8042, rescind special use permits.
This is the request to rescind two special use permits. This was presented on May 23 meeting and there have been no changes since that first reading.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Please begin the roll call vote with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is citizen participation. And anyone can speak on any items that are not on this evening's agenda. Please keep your reports to three minutes if possible. And please give us your name and your address.
I, Gould, 1054 10th Avenue. I'd like to know where we are in the things I gave the city council last week, or the last meeting three weeks ago, as apparently code enforcement, code enforcement supervisor is incapable of doing it without them being brought to the City Commission's attention.
We'll reach out to Mr. Gould.
You want to address it? Okay.
Code enforcement has conducted an activity regarding me in the past. They have taken me to court without giving me the appropriate documents. I wish the City Commission to take action in that fashion. And my personal belief that Julie maybe need to be terminated over that because I made four attempts in here to gain access to those documents. I've talked to Julie once, the city manager once, and previously have had this experience with this activity from code enforcement. And the previous city manager told me it would never happen again. And I knew Scott good enough that he seldomly used that word, "never."
Thank you, Mr. Gould. Any other citizens like to speak this evening?
My name is Zen Daniels. I live at 720 Spruce Street. On Monday, June 5, the City Leavenworth Planning Commissioners conducted a hearing in reference to the rezoning of 926th Avenue lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, Block 2 of James Davis Edition. In a vote of four to two, the Commissioners approved the rezoning. We are here this evening to submit that. The actions of the Planning Commission were premature with regard to a litany of questions left unanswered by the representatives provided by Freedom Behavioral and that an unsubstantiated expert who resides in Lansing, Kansas and was not forced to identify herself, she was not only allowed to participate in the hearing but encouraged to clarify for Freedom Behavioral thoughts and ideas that she would not have reason to speak of if not prior associated in some way with those people. She knew an awful lot about Freedom Behavioral for somebody who just happened to show up from Lansing to Leavenworth meeting. She was also brought up by the Chair to clarify some experts as an expert witness without ever having been compelled to show that she has expertise in any area. Freedom Behavioral provided a representative who couldn't answer the majority of the questions that he was asked. And what he did say was that he didn't know the answers but would be happy to find out and report back to us at a later date. Since the gentleman was unable to or unwilling to respond to the satisfaction of the citizens, the rezoning should most surely have been tabled and the list of outstanding questions revisited when satisfactory information and answers were available. After speaking in person with many residents, a lot of us are still scratching our collective heads wondering, who was this mystery person from Lansing? Why did they qualify her as an expert? And why, she not only spoke freely at the hearing, but again was asked by podium Chair Jay Byrne, Chairman, to clarify the thoughts of Freedom Behavioral representative? How would she have any ideas of the directions in which the gentleman were going, let alone be able to clarify his thoughts or intentions unless prior relationships existed? She appeared comfortable and familiar with all the parties associated with the rezoning matter except the people that were from Leavenworth. We are of the opinion that her participation was pre-planned, possibly rehearsed, and that when things went off track, she was asked again by the Chair to cover the mistaken words previously uttered by the representative of behavioral health. She was also witnessed in this chamber shaking her head and making hand motions, becoming somewhat distressed by the answers that were being given, apparently off script, by Mr. Peterson. Mr. Peterson did state that he had previously been a member of the Planning Commission Board. He was not asked about that and freely offered the information. He also provided details of his other properties in town. And when asked if any of the board members had ever served with Mr. Peterson, I was told by Chairman Byrne, am I saying that right? I was told by Chairman Byrne that they had indeed served together. At that time, I asked the Chairman if he would not think it was fair under parliamentary rules that he recuse himself because he has a prior existing relationship with the gentleman. At that point in time, I was told by the Chair that I was done talking and that I naced it, just go sit down. And I still had questions that hadn't been asked and hadn't been answered and hadn't been addressed and he just flat refused to allow me to reengage the commission. Also, Mr. Peterson stated that he was on the Board, and I don't know if it's a Board of Regents, Board of Commissioners, I'm not sure, but that he was on the Board of, is it Cushing Hospital that's right there?
I don't know. I don't know. What is the point of that?
It's Cushing.
Okay.
It's, I was looking for the map that was on the last meeting, sorry. Cushing Hospital's basically two sets of medical buildings behind the 920 on Spruce.
Right.
Or 926th Avenue. He sat on that Board of Commissions or Regents, I'm not sure what their particular exact title is. And I have information that I am working on substantiating that they sold him that building for $10. It was never offered for public sale. It was never posted. There was never an auction.
I don't, I don't know. You know, I don't know. Let's move on because that's a rumor, I'm sure I don't know.
Okay.
Okay. That's not pertinent to your issue, I don't think, right now.
Well, I'm not trying to sound argumentative, but if he was on that Board and they sold him that building for $10, then that's relevant. I know, I only have three-
But it's not, okay, all right.
Sorry, I only have, I only have three minutes to go. In essence, this was pushed through, it was rushed through. There was no time allotted for the proper answering and asking of legitimate questions. And anyone who disagreed with the Chairman was not allowed to speak. And anyone particularly this unidentified expert from Lansing was not only allowed to come up and speak as a quote "expert witness," but was resolicited to come back up and clarify for Freedom Behavioral, the questions that we were asking.
Okay.
So we would like to know who she is, what her qualifications are, et cetera. And I know I'm asking a lot-
We don't know that here. Yeah. We can't answer you that here.
But it's only fair that if-
They're public meetings and I, you know, whatever, they're, I don't, I don't know that here, so.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, people are at public meetings, that we, our meetings are public, so you can speak. And I appreciate you coming to speak tonight, too. Is there anything else?
And I think I burnt my three minutes pretty quick.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Daniels, I'd like to make comment on a couple of things. First, I'd like to thank you for your comments, appreciate that. One point you brought up that you mentioned someone on the Board, I guess the Planning Commission had, had had business or served with Mr. Peterson. Kansas law is very specific about that. We as elected officials here, obviously living in a small town, we rule on items all the time where we've probably done business with people. We bought something at a grocery store, we bought a house, we bought a car, we've done whatever. The only time that we have to abstain from a vote, we're required to abstain from a vote if ourselves or our spouse, not our family, ourselves or our spouse have a financial or fiduciary interest in that project. So it would, wouldn't be proper for someone not to vote on just because they knew Mr. Peterson. Obviously, being in a small town, everybody on the Planning Commission, everybody on the City Commission, whatever commission, probably knows somebody and sometime, some, some issue's going to come up before them, but they're required to vote on it. Number two, you brought up about Cushing Hospital possibly selling that building for $10, whether they sold it to him for $10 or $10 million, no concern of ours. That's a private business that we have nothing to do with. And that was a, a private deal, whether you paid $100 for your car or $10,000 for your car, that's none of my business or of no concern to me. So I just want to clear those points. I do appreciate the comments that you have brought up about the issues and your concerns.
And so, if I understand you correctly, if I sit on a Board or Board of Regents, Board of Directors, Board of, I don't know what the hospital Board calls themselves, if I sit on that Board with the other members of that Board and they have a building for sale and I say, "I'll give you $10 for it," and they sell it to me without allowing anyone else to have an opportunity to purchase that property, I don't think that causes a conflict of interest?
I have no idea.
No, if it's, if it's-
I don't know what their rules are, which have nothing to do with our rules.
That's having to do with us.
That's not a government, government issue, topic whatsoever. I mean, that's something you take up with the Cushing Board if you feel that's true, but none of our business. We have nothing to do with that whatsoever.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight, citizens? Please keep your comments at three minutes and give your name and address.
Hi, I'm Kami Jackson. I live at 713 Spruce. I also was at the meeting on June 5 about this rezoning. You put it very well how the meeting kind of went. It started out not so much about talking about the rezon, they immediately brought the people in who were selling and buying the property. And it turned from what, I was under the understanding we were only there that night to speak on the rezoning issue, like possibly how it would affect our property values and so forth. I was not prepared for that meeting to come in speaking about the opposition we had as far as the people who are purchasing it and trying to do business in that building. I was under the impression that would take place at the City Commissioners' meeting when it came up on that planning table.
That's what, that's, and you're, you're right, that's, that's a rezoning meeting, yeah.
Right, so-
It had nothing to do with the purchase of it.
Myself and, there was a large majority of community members who came to that meeting. We were all caught off guard. None of us were prepared that night to, to point out our concerns for that. That meeting very quickly, pretty much came, I don't want to say argumentative, but it was kind of like, they only were directing their stuff to the people purchasing, not even necessarily purchasing. They were asking a lot of questions of Mr. Peterson, who I directly asked, "Are you selling or leasing this building?" And he said he's selling it. And I said, "So then you will have nothing to do with this when it's done." He said, "Correct," except for he had, he has a property in our neighboring area around that building. And I said, "So I was not sure why we were asking, why the Board was asking what, a lot of the questions they were asking to him about future use of that building or security of that building and so forth and so on to Mr. Peterson." There were just a lot of questions, this meeting did not feel transparent. And it did not feel like it was an open forum that was for the citizens that were being, just lost the word, affected in this area by the rezoning of this building. So basically, I just came tonight to speak on that, that, you know, I didn't feel it was a fair meeting. And I'm hoping in the future that turns around and no matter what the outcome is, we have a little better understanding at the meetings of the people in the neighborhood that it's going to directly affect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jackson, appreciate you coming in.
Will that come to us at a later date? That issue-
The rezoning is scheduled for the 27th.
What, what day was that?
27.
Okay, well, they'll get another shot at. I'll be caring a little bit what to expect.
Okay. Any other citizens? All right, moving on, public, general items. Public hearing, fire damaged structure, 921 North 10th Street.
Madam Commissioner?
We need to open the public meeting first, please.
I apologize.
Madam Mayor, I move that we open a public hearing to discuss fire damaged structure, 921 North 10th.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please begin voting with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
We are open.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a public hearing related to a fire damaged structure, 921 North 10th. This building was damaged on February 18 of 2017 and its building permit was issued on April 28. The property owner has, has made steady progress toward making repairs in the building. On seriously damaged buildings, the City has a, an ordinance that requires insurance companies to provide the City with 15% of the proceeds of the insurance settlement. The City is to hold that until such time as the City Commission can take action to demolish the structure or direct that it be repaired by a certain date through a public hearing process. Part of that process is if the property owner brings the structure up to our current standards, that the staff does return them, the proceeds that the City has been holding. And I am pleased to report that in this case, the structure has been brought up to standards. The property owner has met all its inspections and staff has returned his funds to him. And the staff recommendation for the Commission is that there be no further action related to this property at this time.
Okay. Are there any comments from the public on this? If not, we have a motion to close the hearing.
Still moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please begin voting with Commissioner Rehny.
We're voting to-
Close the public hearings.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Okay, now to consider a recommendation by staff. Are there any questions that the Commissioners have about this? If not, do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that we draft a payment from the City back to the property owner of 921 North 10th, the 15% of the insurance proceeds that we held in escrow until they prepared it to our standards.
Okay, is there a second on this? Second, yeah.
Is that right, Ms. McCall?
I think that will, will work, but-
You can make it as simple as just approving the recommendation by staff with no further action.
I amend my motion and I move that we approve the recommendation by staff as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, please begin voting with Commissioner Rehny.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right. Motion carried. Next item, public hearing to vacate alley, 4th and Pawnee, First City Hotel subdivision.
Madam Mayor, I move that we open a public hearing to discuss the vacation of the alley at 4th and Pawnee.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please begin voting, Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
The hearing is open.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, this is related to the second Ferguson Hotel. The City had moved to vacate the alley through the plating process, which is sufficient for the City and the county. However, reasonably Ferguson's title company requested it be done by ordinance. So we're sort of duplicating the alley purchase, but we're doing it by ordinance this time. First reading we'll go through tonight, the Ferguson Company is working with one more utility to finalize an agreement. So before second reading, that'll be finished, then we'll have the second reading following that.
Okay. Okay. Are there any comments by the public on this? If not, would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Still moved?
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, please begin voting with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
The public hearing's been closed. Now, first consideration ordinance to vacate alley. This takes a consensus. Do we have a consensus to go with this?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, consider request for exception to the economic development incentive policy for 1920 Spruce Street.
Taylor Tedder, Assistant City Manager, will handle this item.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. Over the past several weeks, I've been in contact with the owner of the building located at 1920 Spruce, which currently houses the Country Mark Grocery Store. From what I've been told, the current tenant and operator of the business is looking to retire and close the store. But he's given the building owner the opportunity to continue operation of the grocery store at that location. The property owner wants to fully renovate and modernize the store with new facade, state-of-the-art refrigeration, LED lighting, shelving, flooring, signage, new parking lot, and much more, amounting to over a million dollars in investment. I did advise the owner, Mr. Pinter and his colleagues, that under our recently approved February 28 economic development incentive policy, that sliding scale with their level of capital investment and, and job retention, they'd be eligible for approximately a 21% property tax abatement. And that'd be contingent on a full application submittal and cost benefit analysis done by the Center of Economic Development and Business Research. But they've expressed that they'll be maintaining approximately 50 jobs, but that level of abatement would not make the project viable for them. So they've wished to ask for an exception from the City Commission. Mr. Pinter and his associates are requesting 75% property tax abatement for 10 years. Currently, they pay roughly $39,000 in property taxes each year. The proposal does not meet our incentives policy, however, the policy does state that you can grant an exception if the project would have a beneficial impact on a particular area of the city, which includes areas in need of revitalization. Currently, we have Mr. Kevin Kerr, the CFO for Royal Property Management here in the audience, to present to you his ideas and opportunities.
All right. Look forward to hearing that.
Good af, good evening, everyone. I just want to introduce myself. My name is Kevin Kerr. I work for Royal Property Management and 1340 East 9th Street Realty Corp. We are a property management and real estate development firm located in central New Jersey. We have shopping centers across this country in Indiana, Texas, New Mexico, Oklahoma, Tennessee. And the reason I bring that up is that we're seeing in this retail climate, businesses shuttering, shopping centers becoming vacant. And, you know, lately, I'm sure everyone's heard in the news about J.C. Penney and about Sears and, and really, there's nothing we can do about that. We're on the, on the receiving end of that. We're the property owner that is notified that our tenant is no longer going to be occupying the space. And what we're seeing is sad and I, you know, we take responsibility for every- And what we're seeing is sad and I, you know, we take responsibility for every shopping center in every place that we have one. We're not just absentee landlords. We're not just there to collect the rent. We're there to make sure that we keep a viable product out there for the citizens, for the customers to enjoy. I'm here tonight after doing some planning and some number crunching and Taylor was nice enough to help me out with some guidance on what's available and what might not be available. And I'm here, I'm not going to go through the, a bunch of facts and figures and bore you, but I am telling you that I'm, I'm here on behalf of our company trying to keep this business open because we don't want to see jobs lost. We don't want to see a building sitting vacant for God knows how long. We want to try to make a difference. We, we couldn't do that with Sears. We couldn't do that with J.C. Penney. But here, we have a chance to try to keep this viable business going. I was there today. It's a great, it's a great little store. It's not really a little store. It's well-maintained. The owner's taken a lot of pride. It's just that he doesn't want to pursue the business. We would, we're in discussions with, with the owner to transition over to us managing and putting in these improvements so that we can continue this business and not have people lose their jobs and possibly increase jobs because we want to add another business segment to the market as well. We want to remodel. We want to add some new product lines that would be useful for the citizens. And I'm not just talking about things that you can buy at Walmart because obviously Walmart's had its impact on local towns across this country. We want to do is we want to say that we're, we might be in New Jersey, but we own property here and we have our finger on the pulse of the citizens here. I traveled here. I, I have to admit, it's my first time here. I told Taylor a few minutes ago before this meeting, this is a humbling town to be in. It is amazing, the history here. We want to be part of it and I, I'm not, you know, I'm not ready to, to necessarily submit the application yet. We still have some legwork to do, work out the figures, the renovations, et cetera, et cetera. But I'm asking that the door be opened, that we're allowed to possibly receive some tax benefits for this project. I understand that the eligibility factors that are listed on the economic development incentive policy don't include this type of thing, but I would just urge your consideration tonight to allow us to explore some potential benefits to allow us to keep this landmark open and keep jobs and keep an economic, make, you know, an economic impact on the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
You bet. Questions? Charles, you have any questions?
Not any questions directly in questions, no. I, I do feel that the, the store, we need, we need a store to open this in town. I'd hate to see that shutter, so I think we do need to do something to work with it. As far as the abatement's concerned, again, I think that's something that we can compromise on and take a look at those numbers, but whatever the abatement is, I would like to have some sort of guarantee that if the abatement's going to be for ten years, that it stays open as a grocery store or at any point in time has that abatement.
Question for Mr. Tedder. You said our policy allows for twenty-one percent. Is that twenty-one percent for ten years or for what period of time is that twenty-one percent abatement according to our policy?
Up to ten years, depending on what the applicant wanted. Obviously, they do want ten years, but I would urge you to do a five-year and then if they've met certain benchmarks that we could prescribe, then you can do another five years.
And what they are looking for, according to the spreadsheet they provided, is basically three hundred and thirty thousand dollar tax abatement over ten years.
That is correct.
And we should, and according to our policy, would probably be around seventy-five thousand if we granted that policy. I don't know, Mr. Kerr wants to answer this. I don't know what the annual volume of that store is. I'd make a rough estimate, ten to fifteen million dollars, not, not knowing anything. And you don't have to disclose that. That's your proprietary information. And, you know, I, I'm very familiar with that store. I use it quite often. I live fairly close to it, use that one as well as the other ones. But I do wonder, is it fair for the citizens to pay three hundred and thirty thousand dollars if the volume stays the same? Has there been given any thought to a CID or a, for whatever the current volume is this year or last year, pick a date, and then any increase, incremental increase? Because if you put in a million dollars, I think that you're thinking that you're going to do more business, that incremental increase, maybe they can get a piece of that sales tax. We've worked out with other companies that, you know, you, they put in the money and it does increase their business and possibly still hit that number that you're looking at. Another one is a, I don't know if that's a CID. Is that in fact a CID if we?
CID is just an, that would not be, that would just be an added tax.
And so you're looking at approximately, what's on average, around thirty-three thousand dollars a year for ten years on average. And let's say you do ten million dollars a year. I'm just guessing that. Three thousand dollars a day for, for the year on average. If you request a quarter cent sales tax that could be brought back to you, that would, that would basically hit the same number, but you'd still be paying your property tax. Obviously, that quarter cent sales tax is passed on to your customers. And the customers then, the market will decide are they willing to pay a quarter cent more for a dollar loaf of bread than they would at, at competitors. But I, I have a feeling that, I think that's more fair to our taxpayers than giving a seventy-five percent tax reduction, property tax reduction. As obviously, property tax is one of our main economic drivers in this town and our policy states twenty-one percent. And I'm very willing to go with what our policy says, to go in seventy-five percent a little bit rich. But I do believe that, I hope the store does stay open. I think some of your statements here may have misrepresented saying it's been a store for fifty years and people shop there for four or five generations. Well, I can remember when the store opened and I haven't been here four or five generations, so that's, that may, may have some little imperfections in, in some of your statements. But I, I am, I would like to entertain or give thought to something to help you stay open and for you to make these improvements, but I don't know that seventy-five percent tax reduction is the way that I'm willing to look at it.
Commissioner Weekly, you have? Yeah. I, I'm sorry, sir, but I, it's, I, I cannot go for the seventy-five property abatement either. That's not, not for this project on, on that at all. I'm going to say that you need to negotiate closer within that, that's our policy, given the number of jobs there, the level of investment. There also needs to be some benchmarks in here of performance. My concern would be that with the tax abatement, that we need to have assurances that it'll be an ongoing facility for ten years, not being able, that, that the grocery door, store does become a viable part of the community. Also, too, there is a big difference in property management versus managing of a grocery store. I, I'd like a little bit more comfort level on, on, you know, where your expertise is in that area. And then the assurances of fifty-plus jobs plus that, that salary requirement in there, if you can meet those benchmarks on that. But seventy-five is a percentage that, for ten years, that, that I could not work with. That's a non-starter for me. So I, like I said, I urge you to go probably back to staff and, and work something that's closer within our economic incentive policy parameters. Okay, my comments are that it's quite a jump between twenty-one and seventy-five percent and we have three actions we can take here. Either approve the request as presented or modify the proposed request and direct staff to draft a development agreement or deny the request. I'd like to have store continuing there in northeast Leavenworth or in North Leavenworth as well, but it's quite a jump between twenty-one and seventy-five and I wondered if maybe we could get some, something in between there that we could negotiate.
I have one more question for.
That would be, that would be pleasing to both sides.
I have one more question for clarification. I see the spreadsheet here, ten-year taxes and year one, thirty-nine thousand, three forty-eight. Is that just the city's portion of the taxes? Are you telling me that if that's the city's portion, city, county, and school board, how much are you paying a year in property taxes, Mr. Kerr? Do you know?
Yeah, that, that is, I have the copy of the bills here. That is a, I believe that's the count, it's one bill.
Yeah, that's one, that's your total property taxes. And so the city portion of that, which we, that's the only ones that we can rule on, is twenty percent of that.
Okay.
So the max we could give you this year, if we would do it, would be about eight thousand dollars.
Okay.
Because it's about a hundred and sixty mils total per city, county, and school board and we've only got thirty-one of it.
Of course.
So your numbers there, let's say we would grant you the seventy-five percent. You're not going to hit three hundred and thirty. You're going to hit one-fifth of that. You're going to hit sixty-five thousand. So you're not, you wouldn't hit what you wanted anyway.
Right.
So you may want to, and we have no control of.
I understand.
School board and everyone else.
Of course.
So I think your numbers are somewhat flawed. I agree with the mayor that, I feel strongly, and I think most members of this community would like to keep that store open in Northwest Leavenworth. It, you know, a lot of people in that neighborhood, a lot of people all over town go there. It's not really a walking grocery store. Not many people walk there.
Right.
Not many people walk to any of our grocery stores because we don't have any in areas downtown. I'm wondering if we can table this and maybe some working going on and I think, Mr. Kerr, possibly you need to do a little bit more of your homework on realizing what your, where your taxes are.
Yeah.
Because what you're asking us has not even come close to what you're asking, what you want to receive here.
We are able to abate. They have to sign off on like a district, but we are able to abate the other entities' property.
If they, if they are in agreement.
No.
No. So you can do either an IRB or do it as a different type of development district, but you're, you're able to.
We can speak to the school board and the county, we can abate their taxes too?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I misspoke, Mr. Kerr. But I'd still, I'm not in favor of seventy-five percent property tax reduction, but I think there's ways that possibly you can reach your goal and we can still be satisfied. And if we have to vote on it tonight, I could not vote for seventy-five percent, but I'd be in favor of tabling this and let some more homework be done and maybe another proposal, but that's up to the commission, not up to me.
Yeah, and I, I would be amenable to that, you know, I just, yeah, it's, you're, you're not the first one to come and, and the first offer on the table we say no to. It's usually a negotiation process.
As he probably knows.
You know, but yeah.
I can certainly.
All we're saying is we want to bargain somewhere in the middle here.
I can certainly work with Mr. Kerr and, and perhaps bring something back to you. He probably doesn't want to come all the way from New Jersey for a second proposal, but perhaps we could work to come up with a different point.
We have technology, who can?
Plus, there's so much I haven't seen. I mean, you know. I want to thank you guys. I, I do, I, I will say that this is, was, is a starting point, so, you know, it's, it's to start here to get to somewhere. So I want you to, I don't want you to think that, you know, that we're this greedy or gullible to think that we're going to get this. I mean, we go for, we start here and then we work our way towards. And I appreciate you guys considering it and it's, and that's really was the goal for me to come here and, and to get some support and I appreciate it very much.
One other comment I'd like to make. Mr. Kerr, you know, one of your competitors in southern part of town, Dylan's, which I'm sure you're familiar with, they recently, I'd say in the last two or three years, did an upgrade. I have no idea what it cost.
Right.
But I suspect anything like that's going to be a million plus.
Right.
And they did it without a nickel's worth of incentive. They did not come to us and ask for anything and it's done very well. I think the market pressures, it probably increased their business because of their investment.
Right.
So we haven't done it and asked for grocery stores. Doesn't mean that it was not something we can work with you. So I invite, I ask you to work with Mr. Tedder. I think we're all kind of saying that we're in agreement with that.
Yes.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I move that we table the request for exception to the economic development incentive policy for nineteen twenty Spruce.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Please begin voting, Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Next item on the agenda, general obligation bonds and temporary notes.
Okay, Madam Mayor and Commissioners, this afternoon, or I'm sorry, this morning at eleven o'clock, we did the sale of the bonds. We did two sets of temporary notes and one general obligation bond. You have in front of you a couple of documents. One of them is the financial analysis of the bonding issue. There's a lot of data in there. It's got some trends. It's got the bids. It's got the bonding summaries. What I'm going to focus on is just the three-page that I gave you, which is just the, you can read this later.
Okay.
So what I'm going to do is I'm just going to go through and I'm going to read all the, the bids that we got and then there's several motions that you'll need to make. So we'll go through and just read those first and we'll go through each motion one by one. The first, the first issue that we did were temporary note, series A, two thousand seventeen, in the principal amount of one million, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. These were temporary, these are temporary notes to finance the general improvements, the pavement management for this year. And we've received two bids on those. The first one was from Hutchinson, Shockey, Early and Company. And that was for one point five zero eight nine eight seven percent. The other bid was for UMB Bank and it was for one point five five percent. The low bid was from Hutchinson, Shockey, Early and Company. The next issue were the temporary notes B, two thousand seventeen, in the principal amount of seven hundred thousand dollars. These were, this was to finance a portion of Second Street Bridge over Three Mile Creek. We received three bids on those. Those bids were UMB Bank for one point four six six seven five six percent. Hutchinson, Shockey, Early and Company, one point five one seven seven five zero percent. And DA Davidson and Company, one point six seven nine eight five six percent. The low bid on that was UMB Bank. The next was the general obligation bonds, series two thousand seventeen B. Initially, we were planning on, we thought we would need one million, six hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. That was the amount that we went out for, for bids. We did get, the low bidder also offered a premium on that, so we were able to reduce the amount needed to bond to one million, six hundred and forty thousand dollars. These bonds are going to be used to redeem the A two thousand sixteen temporary notes that we issued last year for the general improvements, the pavement management. And we received four bids on those. They were UMB Bank for one point nine four one four seven two. Robert W. Baird and Company, one point nine seven eight five nine four. Hutchinson, Shockey, Early and Company, two point zero one four nine two three. And DA Davidson and Company, two point one oh eight six two four. Low bid on that was UMB Bank. Staff would recommend that you accept the low bids of each of those bond issues. All right, so we've got several actions to take. The first one would be to accept the proposal for the temporary notes.
Okay, so you need a separate motion on each one of these?
Um, yeah, the temporary notes, the two temporary notes can be one, one motion together.
By motion in one roll call.
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept proposals for temporary notes, series A two thousand seventeen and B two thousand seventeen.
Is there a second? Moving in second, please begin voting, Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
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 Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution B two thousand one seventy-one for the issuance of A two thousand seventeen temporary notes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Please begin voting, Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution B, twenty-one seventy-two, for the issuance of B, twenty-seventeen temporary notes.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and please begin voting, Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
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 Madam Mayor, I move that we accept proposals for the general obligation bond, series twenty-seventeen B.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and please begin voting, Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
You're up.
Nancy.
You're up.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, I move that acceptance of the resolution B, twenty-one seventy-three, to the issuance of general obligation bond, series twenty-seventeen B.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and please begin voting, Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
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 One more.
Okay, and the last one is a roll call vote, second consideration ordinance number eighty-four-three, general obligation bonds, please begin the roll call vote with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
It's a workout. Okay, next item on the agenda is bids, contracts, and agreements. Consider change order number one to the design contract with George Butler Associates Incorporated, the sanitary sewer inflow and infiltration project.
Thank you, sir. Madam Mayor and Commissioners, this is a request brought to you to increase the value of the design contract with George Butler Associates. This is related to our ongoing effort to reduce inflow and infiltration in the wastewater system. We have been concentrating in the Three Mile Creek drainage basin for several years, in an effort to reduce the inflow amount by thirty percent. Previous years, we have worked basically south of Spruce and west of Tenth Avenue. The current project is north of Miami Street to Metropolitan, in the Broadway and Seventh Street area. The design contract with GBA was approved in two thousand and sixteen, in May of two thousand and sixteen, in anticipation that the project in this area would be a rehabilitation project, and a minor repairs, a few, a few major repairs, and some relining. As the city got into some of the oldest sewers in the community, we realized that the project really was no longer a rehabilitation project, it was more of a replacement project. We looked at many different alternatives on how to best spend our resources, and ultimately, the footprints of the project was scaled back, and what was originally anticipated to be perhaps a two-year project, at the rate we need to make these replacements is probably more like a five-year project. And as a consequence, the design of the plans became much more complex, and ultimately, we do have a project that's out for bid currently, anticipating approximately seven hundred thousand dollars' worth of work. Ultimately, as part of that, GBA had overspent their engineering budget trying to get these project plans out. Based on the fact that this is a different project than we had originally anticipated, and much more complex, staff does recommend that the city commission approve this change order for the design effort, and we will be looking at a different type of design project, or design contract for the next set of projects, because it won't be any better for the next two or three years in this part of town.
Right. Any questions to staff? If not, if they have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve change order number one to the design contract with George Butler Associates in the amount of seventeen thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Second.
It's been moved in second, and please begin voting, Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Next item on the agenda, consider business and technology park, real estate and development agreement.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, on Tuesday, May thirtieth, the city opened proposals for a shovel-ready business and technology park. At the June sixth study session, there was a city commission consensus to move forward with JMK Partners LLC on a proposal for a property of slightly more than eighty acres in the southwest part of the city, to include fully utilities, communications, access, and amenities, on par with the highest quality business parks of this type in the area. The site of the park is adjacent to the city's existing business park, and will benefit greatly from the expansion of Eisenhower Road. This project is about jobs and economic development and the future of the county. Subsequently, city staff and representatives from JMK have worked on a development agreement and a land sale contract. If the attached contract is approved, the next steps would be a closing on the land, whereby the city would become the landowner. At that time, the development portion would begin under the second part of the contract. The work would be completed no later than June thirtieth, twenty eighteen, and should the contract be approved, the city staff would meet at some point with Leavenworth County Development Corporation to start a marketing plan for the park, and begin responding to leads. Now, this has been a long process. We are at, near the end point, and I believe that we will have a product, should the commission approve this, that will be something that we can be proud of, and we can market regionally, if not nationally, and bring high-quality jobs to the county, really. It's a county-wide project. I'd like to thank the county for their portion of the funding for this project, and the city commission, and really the taxpayers of Leavenworth County for pledging toward this project. We do have representatives from JMK and Lexico here in the audience today. If you have any questions about the park, if you have any questions from the staff, and I would like to also mention that last night I was at the water board meeting, and they have approved putting in the service line for the park. It will give them quite a few new customers, but they were also generously agreeing to put in that water line for us.
Good.
So, this has been a true community project, with a lot of entities pitching in for this.
Absolutely. Any questions of the partners?
I just have one, a couple points. One, it says the work will be completed no later than June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. You know, that's basically a year, that's enough time. I don't wanna handcuff anybody. I know they wanna get it done by then, but-
Yes, and we, as typical city contracts, we did include liquidated damages sections, and we did work with the developer on if that is sufficient, and they believe that that is a-
So, they're comfortable with that date?
The deadline they are absolutely comfortable with.
Okay. And next thing I'd like to say is, obviously, this thing has gotten battered about, between a couple entities, and obviously, there was a story on the news last night, which I don't consider completely factual, but it's not my place to say that. This project was initially started by the county, but due to probably ill-advice from some of the people involved, it had to be taken out of it. They decided to pull out of it because of, it may not have passed proper scrutiny on the bidding process. We then took it over. We bid this thing according to HOIL. This thing had been cleared, and it was sent out for bid. We had five companies pull bid packages. We had a bid meeting in the middle of that month. Only one company came in for the bid meeting, am I correcting that? And when the bids were open on May thirtieth, or whatever the magic day was, we opened them, only one company had provided a bid. There were five, there were plenty, there were at least five companies that had options added, that pulled bid packages, they chose not to bid, for whatever reason, I don't know. This is a good proposal, it's clean, it's good, we need to move forward. We've gotten funding from the county, we've also got our funding in, and it's something we need to get moving on, and let's make it roll, in my opinion.
I agree a hundred percent with what the mayor pro tem said.
I concur.
It's a good-
I'd like to put forth afterwards like that, a motion, Madam Mayor, that we approve the business and technology, real estate, and development agreement as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and please begin voting with Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
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 It passed four to zero. Thank you very much. We still have the consent agenda, we're not ready to go yet.
Well, wait, there's one, one more?
Yep.
Oh, we do have one more. Consider easement agreement for replacement of byway interpretive panels.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. You received a briefing at your June sixth study session from the Kansas Department of Wildlife, Parks, and Tourism about their efforts to promote Kansas' byways. And as you know, we have two that intersect the city, including the Glacial Hills Byway and the Historic Frontier Military Byway. A permanent public improvement easement is necessary to place the interpretive panel signage at Ray Miller Park. The state of Kansas has assumed responsibility to upkeep and replace those panels in the future. So, tonight, we're asking you to enter into this easement agreement as presented.
All right, any questions on this?
No.
Pretty exciting to see it.
Yeah.
That's really good. Okay, do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the easement agreement for the placement of byway interpretive panels as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been moved in second, and please begin voting with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Consent agenda.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, I'd like to move forward for approval claims for May twentieth, twenty seventeen, through June ninth, twenty seventeen, in the amount of two million, fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-six cents. The net amount for pay number eleven, effective May twenty-sixth, twenty seventeen, in the amount of three hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-five cents. Fire and police pension is eleven thousand, four hundred and one dollars and thirty-four cents, and the net amount for pay number twelve, effective June ninth, twenty seventeen, in the amount of three hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty-three cents, and there's no fire and pension for that period.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve the consent agenda, please begin voting with Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
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 Okay, we need to go into executive sessions, so, for consultation.
Do you want comments first, or should I?
Oh, yeah, I think that would be good. Let's do comments first, before we go into executive session. Okay.
Well, obviously, you have comments.
Yes.
I just have, I just have one comment. Well, I always like to do that before executive sessions, I don't know how long we're gonna be in there while the people are still here.
Right.
We're going into budgeting season, and I, and I just hope that the city manager, finance director, and the staff can do well in presenting us a budget, and possibly looking at ways that we can improve public safety in our town, not that public safety is wanting, but there's either a real perceived issue with traffic control, crime, call it drugs, whatever you might, whatever we might wanna call it, and that's one of the primary functions of city government, is providing safety for citizens, and I hope that we can look at that in our budget, and something that's presented that possibly we consider to improve our public safety.
Okay, any other comments before we go into executive session?
No, ma'am.
How long do you need?
We were, we are going into consultation with the city attorney deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, and how long do we need?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes.
Madam Mayor, I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of consultation with the city attorney deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, and we return to this room, we'll go at eight fifteen, by that clock, by this clock, maybe twelve or thirteen minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, that'll round it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Excuse me, can I, sorry, I need to add in your motion that you're, the city manager and the attorney will be in the, in the meeting.
I add, motion the city manager, the city attorney, the assistant city manager, city manager and city attorney attend the meeting with us. Second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
Aye.
Carly?
We are back in session. Do I need to motion to go back into session?
No.
No, just to adjourn.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay. There's a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
No, I think Mr., this-
I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, yes, yes, yes.
There will be no study session next week.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, are there any other comments from staff or commissioners?
No.
If not?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded, please begin voting with Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
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 We are adjourned.